Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Let's call the board of supervisors for Tuesday, January 12, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I can't stand.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave citizens and servicemen serving overseas. Okay, thank you very much. Just we can go to announcements. Kathy, you have any announcements?
No announcement this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay, how about you, Mark? You okay?
You're on mute, Mark.
Chairman, at the last meeting, I neglected to mention, I wanted to thank Eric Hines for his service to Warmister. Eric moved on to another job in another township and really did a terrific job for us. And I meant to mention that on the reorg meeting, but if you're watching, Eric, or the public, you know, thank you very much for your service, Eric. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. He's still with us till Friday.
Yes, and you stole my thunder there, Mark, but that's it. It's quite all right. All right, why don't we go to Mary? Sounds like you're feeling a little better, hopefully.
Yes, thankfully. I do not have any announcements tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and Judy?
No announcements tonight.
Thank you, and yes, I will just piggyback on Mark. Eric, thanks for your job well done, and we wish you all the best in your new position. Okay, no presentations tonight. I don't believe we can move right to land matters.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, I guess, introduce to the public, Sky Sareso is assisting us with the meeting this evening. I think that's Sky. I've never seen her without a mask on, so.
Yeah, that's Sky.
I believe that's Sky, yeah.
She's finally smiling. She didn't look too familiar here.
The, yes, she'll be with us, helping us out with the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Sky.
Hopefully beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sky.
All right, Sky, welcome to the Hollywood Squares.
Yes.
He's too young to know what that is.
Well, we can call it the Brady Bunch Squares as well.
He's just too young for that, too, Ken.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, now that we've all dated ourselves, now we can go to land use matters. And we'll consider the war, the Warmister Community Park and Shenandoah Woods purchased debt and refinancing of the 2014 and general obligation notes, the 2015 and the 2019 general obligation notes. I guess I'll hand that over to our interim manager, Mr. McCauley, Bill.
And I'll let it do a quick handoff to the expert, Jeff Calhoun.
Okay, Jeff.
Want to give a synopsis of this boring deal and the ordinance question, please?
Absolutely. So the new money is 12 million for a 20-year term. In addition, you have the multiple refundings, which create an overall savings of approximately $41,000 as of close today. The 2019 note is being extended by seven years, so the maturity was in 2027. That has been extended to 2034, and also generating about a $17,000 savings. The long and the short of it is you're taking advantage of the lowest interest rate market in history. So there's a time to issue debt. This is certainly the best that we've seen. But happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about the ordinance or the structure.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information, we had a choice of taking, it was more, it was closer to $100,000 savings on the 2019 refunding. Had we kept it at the same term, however, we extended it because that's the useful life of the asset. The sprinkler system is, has a useful life of 15 years. So we extended the financing over that time, and hopefully that'll lead us to having some profits available from the golf course to transfer to the general fund, God willing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just have, well, not so much a question, but a comment that, just for the public's edification, so I get this straight. All this borrowing, we're restructuring past debt as well.
Correct.
Because I had, no, I had some questions on that today. I'm like, wait a minute. The loan didn't go from 8.5 million to 12 billion in 2015, but we're actually taking debt that we issued a couple of years ago and restructuring that along with this, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, just for the public's edification, I understand completely. Thank you.
Right, right, yeah, we're not borrowing an additional.
Additional monies, right, because that was a question I had.
We're basically refinancing the debt we have now, so we're restructuring our debt. We're at an incredibly low interest rate.
Correct.
That definitely helps us in the long run, obviously.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I think we brought this up and we discussed this at length at other meetings. You know, as Jeff said, we're at an incredibly, this is unprecedented times as far as interest rates and borrowing rates, and everyone who has debt or is thinking about, you know, taking on some debt for capital projects, whether it be at the corporate level or even at your residential level to borrow to do home improvements, this is just the time to do it, so we're taking advantage as everyone else. You know, we are a $38 million budget, so it's very similar to a small-cap corporation. Any, Sky, is there any public comment? Well, actually, we need to have a motion, right? I think we have to.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'll make a motion, motion to approve the, where am I? Motion to approve the refinancing and the adoption of ordinance 7652021.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and now this ordinance covers all three, restructuring of all three general obligation notes. Am I correct in understanding that?
It says note debt service A, B, and C.
Yes, well, I think Jeff mentions 12 million of new money. There's the two refundings, one 2019 and then one 2000. Jeff, what was the year of that one?
2015 and 2019 general obligation notes.
Right.
13, 15, and 19, and it's all covered under this one ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we've had a motion, we've had a second. There's no public comment. There's no further comment from the board? Okay, why don't we call the question? Should we just do an eye vote here? Or do you want to call it?
It's an ordinance, it should do a roll call.
It should be a roll call.
Roll call, okay.
It's an ordinance, this isn't just a resolution.
Okay, so let's start with Kathy.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion carries 5-0. Okay, excellent. Moving right along, we'll have some, we have the first public comment.
There are no email public comments, Mr. Chairman, and I just confirm there are no in-person public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated December 22, 2020, and approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated January 4, 2021. I'm assuming that everyone has reviewed them. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, everyone's on mute, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, move by Mark?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I guess for the consent agenda, do we need public comment on that? I think so. So let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, do we have a financial report this, today? No? Okay, so that'll be at the, either the meeting on the 21st or first month, or first meeting in February. Okay, unfinished business. I believe we have some unfinished business, do we not? I don't see any on the agenda, so there is no unfinished business?
I believe there is, Mr. Chairman. We got a memo from Sky this afternoon regarding the York Road settlement.
It was in the packet.
I'm working off probably an old sheet here. Yeah, me too. I just happened to catch an email later on this afternoon.
That's the only thing on there, Mr. Chair.
It's not anyone's fault. We just reached agreement, we.
We've talked about it multiple times.
Yeah, and I also want to say one other thing, too, that before we started this meeting, just for the record, we had executive session, was it yesterday, for hours? And we had, the topics discussed were the PBA, the police collective bargaining agreement, and this zoning hearing board appeal. And any person, let me finish, any personnel matter. And those are the three topics that were discussed. And after that executive session, Scott and I went about meeting with the other side, and we came up with a proposed settlement. Scott, if you want to, you can go into more detail if you'd like, but.
My apologies for that. I should have put that under the announcements.
No, it's okay.
That did slip my mind.
No, that's why I wanted to say it, just for, you didn't do anything wrong.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flair.
Yes, I can, you know, briefly, I sent around the email with the proposed settlement agreement. Basically, it went along with the terms that we talked about in executive session yesterday. They were agreeable to our request to have trees in there. Both sides are confident, they're not confident or comfortable with the terms, and with this tonight, we can have this matter, a vote tonight and ratifying the settlement, we could have this matter wrapped up then.
Okay, happy to hear that. Again, the sea of asphalt in the township, I love to see that continue to be beautified and, you know, add a different look to our parking lots. Okay, so I guess is there a motion to, how would this go? Was this a motion to?
Yeah, motion to approve. The, you have the agreement in front of you, the. Settling the appeal of the decision of the zoning hearing board that was dated, I think, August 18, 2020 regarding.
October 29.
Plaza, what's that?
Date was October 29th was the decision date.
Okay, 606 York Road.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Hey, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to say I'm just glad that there was a compromise that included some beautification and some more lighting and some more security issues, and I think that was a good compromise.
Yes, I would agree with that. Thank you, Judy.
I like, I also, Mr. Chair, I'm very happy that we're bringing it, bringing this space up. And I like what they did in the back, and it was, like Judy said, a good compromise. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any comments from the public?
Public comment, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so let's call the question, all in favor? Aye.
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 And the ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you very much. Glad to see that that was resolved annecarably. All right, let's move on, new business. Consideration to appoint our new finance director, John Ramsey, as assistant treasurer. Happy to say we have a new finance manager now, or finance director. So I'll turn that over to you, Bill.
Sure, Mr. Ramey is on board. He's been working diligently. We have a, we have a draft audit for 2019, finally. He can't take full credit for that, but we're moving in the right direction. He's going to be a great asset to Warmister Township. And he's hit the ground running. Steve Weisner's still with us, closing out issues that he's working with. And John's going to be able to transition right to, excuse me, right to the 2020 year end. And I'm already on the, about closing the books for 2020 and moving that to to audit, so that we don't end up in the same position we did with 2019. However, I believe the issue in question is the appointment of John as assistant treasurer.
Yes.
I will be quiet and allow the board to take the appropriate action.
Okay, so is there a motion to appoint our new finance director, John Ramey, as assistant treasurer?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments from the board?
Yeah, just one, Mr. Chairman. I know you and I spoke today. I really think this township owes a great debt of gratitude to Steve Weisner. And he stepped in here when we needed an interim manager and stayed way longer than he wanted to. And he stepped into this and really dug us out. We owe him a great debt of gratitude to Steve.
I wanted to say the same thing. I was going to make that comment, Mark, because we were so fortunate that he came back and really worked there and stayed to the very end so we could have things straightened out from the mess that we had from the audit. I'm really happy that he really helped us out, so thank you, Steve.
One of the nicest guys in the business to.
Agree, I agree.
Yes, and no argument from here.
Mr. Chairman, two points. I'd like to point out that I gave Mr. Weisner his first job in the local government. And the two, I totally agree with your comments, the comments of the board. And when he finishes up his duties shortly, I propose that we bring him back for a special resolution of gratitude for his efforts in cleaning up the problems from 2019.
And I have no objection with that.
I would love it.
At all.
Steve's always been jealous of some of the resolutions and proclamations I got in personal townships. So this is one way that he can get one.
And well deserved.
He did a great job.
Yes. Okay, so there's no other comments. Is there any comments from the public? Okay, so with that, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's 5-0, thank you. Okay. Two vacancies, excuse me, two vacancies for union members to the Pension Investment Advisory Committee for a one-year term. Consider to appoint, I'm assuming we got some lucky candidates?
There was a small miscommunication at the reorganization meeting. We did receive requests for reappointment from the two remaining union members on the pension advisory board. Ann Duffy and Jean Astorito would like to be reappointed to their positions.
Okay, I thought that was kind of odd, anyway, that, I'm glad you're here, it was just a miscommunication. So I guess is there a motion to appoint the two existing union members?
Yeah, some moved, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, they're good members of the board, too.
Yes, I agree. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, any other additional comments? None from the public? Okay, with that, we'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, this was taken on and put back on several times, so we'll move on to the, I believe it's the last order of business. The collective bargaining agreement between the Warmister Township and Warmister Township Police Benevolence Association that considers consideration to ratify the tentative contract. Is there a motion?
Uh, some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
Okay, so Mary, we'll let Mary second that one?
Yes, that's fine.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, can we move this into discussion? I mean, I think we should let the public know what we're doing here.
Sure. Sure, we're, this has been, oh, you know what, Keong, Keong's not with us, is she? So.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to take this?
Yeah, would you please?
Yeah, sure. Board members reviewed the proposed tentative settlement, excuse me, yesterday in executive session. You have a three-year contract wage increase of 2.75 per year. Incorporating some language from a PLRP decision related to independent bargaining agreement. There's a two-tier clause for new hires on educational and status. Also, two-tier for new hires on retirement age of 55. And then there's some minor modifications to the existing health insurance plan. There's an opt-out where the township will pay a bonus of 40% of the health insurance plan cost to the employees they opt out of the township's plan. And one thing that was added from the tentative settlement that you reviewed yesterday is language bringing the section on dependent children into compliance with the Affordable Care Act. So that's the, that is the, that is the tentative settlement that you reviewed yesterday. And council action to ratify the new three-year collective bargaining agreement is in order.
So let's get this straight. This is an extension of the previous collective bargaining agreement? Well, there's been some minor changes, so I don't know if you could call it an extension. There are some, you should have that, you should see, you should have that with you, Mark.
Right, I do, but just for the public's edification. I mean, I know we spoke about it at great length on the phone today. I just, I wish we were getting more relief on new hires, because, Bill, you went on at the meeting on 22nd, but the real problem with township finances is these real rich, and it's a very rich contract. And I don't want to take anything away from the officers we have here. I mean, nobody's a bigger supporter of police than me. I have their sign on my front lawn, as a matter of fact. But if we don't get relief from new hires, substantial relief, we're never going to be able to keep the force where it needs to be. I mean, we're down to 43 now. We have several officers ready to retire. We replace them, they're going under this bargaining agreement, that we're just taking ourselves further down the rabbit hole. I'm not saying I have the answer, because I don't have the answer. And none of us are responsible for this. These rich things were granted over many years.
Yes, you and I had that conversation today.
But I really would like to have seen more relief on new hires, that we have a lot of guys ready to rotate out, that we can hire and beef our force back up to where it needs to be, without further bankrupting the township.
Any other comments?
And a quick one, that was, this, has the PBA agreed to this already?
No, they have not.
That's something we talked about today.
Yeah, they want to vote on this, I believe, tomorrow.
Well, I think that it does offer us future savings. I mean, I too wanted to have more savings upfront, but it does offer us future savings. And I think it's a very good plan, I think, for the police. Everybody's telling us not to hurt the police, and I don't think any of us wanted to go to arbitration. That being said, we might still have to go to arbitration if the police don't vote on it tonight. So I think that we should approve this three-year term, in three years. And we don't know what's going to come up with healthcare in the next few years, so maybe we'll be able to get some more savings down the road.
And you know, one of my comments that was forthcoming here is that, you know, as far as the police negotiations, they, you know, they didn't get, they gave up a few things here that they thought were pretty big deals. You know, the wages, the wage increases are modest. And they understood that we were in, you know, some financial difficulties here, and they were willing to give up a few things. So, I mean, the way it turns out, Mark, is that, you know, you know how negotiations are. I remember negotiating contracts, you know, in a previous life. And, you know, no one walks away with everything they want. You walk away with what you think you can live with and would be a fair, fair to both sides. And, you know, their, you know, their side is that they didn't get everything they wanted, and that's our position as well. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to argue the points, your points, because they are valid. But, you know, we didn't, this is not a start-from-scratch contract.
I agree with Mr. Hayes, Ms. Hoover. We did ask for additional concessions, but we did receive concessions on both sides of the fence. We will have some future savings down the road, as Ms. Hoover said. And so I guess it's the concession on both sides, and so we would like to ratify it tonight. And hopefully they will, too.
Yeah, this is not to say that they won't, you know, their vote is tomorrow. So we either, you know, if they don't agree to the contract, then I guess we'll take it to the next step. But we'd like to move on, we'd like to get this behind us and, you know, and move on. Any other comments? Any comments from the public, Sky?
No public comment.
Okay, so I guess we should probably call a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
We had a motion and a second, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's call the question, Kathy?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark?
I'm a very reluctant no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. The motion carries four one. I want to thank the police the, the police union for being patient and, you know, this has been back and forth for since last January, actually, and you know, there was periods of no movement, and then we got everybody back in the room. We tried to get things going, and I appreciate them being patient and, and helping us out, you know, as best they could, giving up a few things, one of them being a significant percentage pay increase, and you know, hopefully hopefully they, they see it the same way and, and vote tomorrow. We'll find out. Thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman, there's an expression, because I come out of the I've been on both sides of the table, that when both sides are unhappy, a little bit unhappy, it might be, it's probably a good settlement.
Yes. I, I've always said that, regardless of whether it be union negotiations or any type of contract negotiations, so hopefully, hopefully we can move forward and get this behind us, and then at least we'll have some sort of stability and understanding of what our costs are for the next couple of years. Okay, so the announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. McCauley?
Excuse me. Chair, you, you caught me you caught me a, a little off guard, but I can tell you that we're I might be stealing the engineer's thunder here. We're, we're out to bid for the 2021 million paving program. I anticipate having bids for your consideration hopefully at the, the second February meeting so that we can can move forward. And the will be final, and as I said before, we've got the draft, the draft financial audit, I expect to be to bring the, the final version to you for your for your consideration within, within the next months.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. McCauley, first a comment. I'd like to say thank you for putting all this together so quickly tonight. You and your staff have done an amazing job. And I wanted to ask, the January 21st meeting will be canceled. When is the next date of the supervisors' meeting?
February 4th?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm, I'm assuming you, you cleaned off your plate, so we're, we're assuming that there's no business for January 21st, but I'll defer to the chair on that.
Oh, okay.
I believe, I don't believe we have any enough business to warrant a meeting on the 21st, so if there's no objection from the board and our professionals and staff, we could cancel that meeting.
An objection here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All righty, so with that, I guess we'll move on to the second round of public comment.
There are no email public comments, Mr. Chairman, and it looks like there are no in-person public comments either.
Okay, thank you, Sky. Supervisors' comments. I guess we'll start with, well, Kathy's spinning in my, in my in my Hollywood square, so we'll go to you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only other thing I wanted to mention at, at the last meeting is that I would like to see a little more communication amongst us. Last week, one of our employees was let go, which, you know, I knew was happening. I, I wasn't made aware of it. I mean, I found out about it in the supermarket from a stranger. And I requested a copy of the letter that was given to that, to that employee. I still haven't gotten it yet. I'm just asking respectfully for a little, little better communication.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I reported that, and I knew we had executive session coming up yesterday, and you're aware, I reported that under personnel to the board at the executive session yesterday, unfortunately. Mr. McKee had a, a more important a, a more important appointment, but I'll, I'll say the well, under, under normal circumstances, I would have emailed I would have emailed the, the, the action to the board, but I know I had a an executive session within, out of two business days, so I reported it directly. The, I can send out the I can send out the the memo, the reduction in the in the workforce memo that was given to the employee.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
To the, to the board, that's not a problem.
Thank you. That, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. It's just, I didn't want to bring it up before your supervisor comment. As you can see, I'm not foaming at the mouth about it. It's just a, simply a little better communication would be terrific.
Okay. Now, Kathy, you look like you're back.
Oh, okay. I just want to say, everybody stay safe, wash your hands, wear your masks, and see you at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mary?
Yeah, something I did forget to mention earlier was, don't forget that Christmas tree collections, make sure you're placing them curbside this week with your regular scheduled yard waste and any other time with your bulk items. You can also drop them off at parks or rack in the parking lot near the dumpster. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Judy?
No comments, just thank you for all this work, everybody. I'm so glad that we have the police contract almost settled, if, once we get their vote, and, and that, that parking, that shopping mall issue has been settled. That's good.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and I agree, you know, I'm, I'm hoping you know, we, we don't want to, we want to support our police as best we can. You know, they were, they, they understood that, and we want to continue to do that. So thank you for all your hard work. And thanks to all our, oh, I just wanted to mention I've been, I've been over the park. I drove by it a few times, and there's a lot of work going on over there, from what I understand. Things are moving along nicely. Miko's doing so far a, a good job communicating and and getting the work done with his least amount of disruption, and I, from what I understand, everything's going very well over there. Craig and I spoke today, I believe. I'm not sure where the rendering is of, of the new park, the plans, because I know some people have asked me, as I, when I see them out and about, where they can see that. I would like to, as soon as possible, get that out on, maybe on our township webpage, so people can have a look at, at some of the, the work that's, that's proposed there and that's going to happen, and hopefully it'll be done, you know, before the summer, most of it. So we'll keep, stay tuned for that. We're going to do our best to get that out there as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a point? How, how quickly they forget council saved 1.1 million dollars by adopting the, the, well, by adopting the ordinance authorizing the incurrence of non-electoral debt this evening, as opposed to the bank deal that had previously been approved. I, I expected public comments to be lined up congratulating you for your, for your efforts, but unfortunately, that is not how, that is not how local government goes.
No, and, and the old adage, no good deed goes unpunished as well. So I'm sure that it's, you know, we'll hear it at some point. But yeah, it's, it's nice to, it's always nice to restructure your debt and save a lot of money in the, and that actually in the long run, helps us out immensely for for the future of the township, which is why we're all here, to, to maintain longevity and financial stability for the township for many years after we're all, we're gone. So I don't believe, I think that's it, after the supervisors' comments. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, everyone, you have a great evening. Be safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, hand sanitizer, and hope to see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good evening, everyone.